And term of talk.
Let me just live life of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, welcomes. And we are, we have no celebration of excellence tonight, so we'll go straight to comments from the audiences or anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment this evening? Right? Uh, any additions? No?
No.
No, I'm moving around. Um. Routine business and the approval of minutes. Uh, can we have a motion, please, to approve minutes of the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education Business Meeting?
So. Okay.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, or edits for these minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone who's opposed or abstaining? All right, on to Board of Education Committee reports, uh, buildings and grounds.
I have a small report from that particular committee. So we met yesterday, Andrew, myself, uh, Superintendent Act and John, um, Lutromovich?
Yep.
Sorry if I butchered that.
Lutromovich.
There you go. Um, and he provided several updates for us. The transfer switch for the generator to operate the fire pump at the high school was repaired recently. Uh, a number of parking lot lights are failing at the high school and will soon be replaced. Uh, BCS, we've almost completed the first phase of the energy management system upgrade. It's been very challenging to try and regulate the temperature in the classroom using two different systems to control the heat. We're replacing numerous failed actuators and valves that open and close valves on the radiators. And when they fail to do so in the open position, causing room temperatures to be hotter. In addition, it was discovered as part of the install that a controller that is responsible for a large section of the elementary wing is no longer working. It needs to be replaced along with the one next to it. While we are running the wires and connecting to the new system. We also are replacing the outside sensor that has failed. We're continuing to work with the town to put in an additional redundancies and notification pieces in the well pump at BCS which serves BCS and some town offices. Lastly, we hope to have the HVAC assessment required every five years completed soon. And I'm sure we'll be touching on some of these also in finance.
Thank you very much. On to curriculum, the curriculum committee that is me. Met with several teachers who are here this evening and we went over four different things. Two of them are new courses to approve and two of them are regarding textbook adoptions. Um, the new courses. Here we'll describe a little bit more, but one is the, uh, ECE marketing, which is for credit at Eastern. It is a business oriented class that ties in with some of our other things. And, um, it's about marketing, obviously. So the grant is grant funded for the first year and will be a fairly minimal cost, um, moving forward. Um, I think we're, we have an only gender to discuss later, right?
We, I, we need to add, so it's ECE marketing and what's the other one?
The second one is the emergency medical responder course, which is, um, a semester long course, which is a, um, stepping stone, if you will, to the, you know, being an EMT. Um, it is for students who are interested in the medical field or being a first responder or applicable to general life and several other things. Uh, the textbooks are going to be grant funded. Um, so CPR materials and other durable medical supplies. And, uh, yeah, I think we had that first.
So can we add, I, I, I don't have that on here. So.
And we don't have it.
So can we add? Yeah, we do have additions. So that would be under, um, F, A will add five, which would be ECE marketing. And A six will be emergency medical responder course. Sorry about that.
Yeah, you know, as I was saying that, I was like, don't remember.
Yeah, I, I don't know. There's been so many iterations of this. I apologize.
I know that the teachers for that course are here.
Yes.
Better, but, um, I think these are both no brainer approvals, just to my opinion. The committee decided felt that the, these were both very good additions. And then, um, for textbooks, we have, uh, social studies and world language books, um, for the, there were materials from three publishers that were reviewed to arrive at the final recommendation. The teachers were pretty clear that there was some better options than others. The, um, oh, for the EMR course of Texas, the only accepted text for that one is easy, but the social studies are for world history, one and two, which are grades nine and 10. Uh, both courses will use the same textbook. Um, Savas is the publisher and three year was sort of a big number here, but, um, we have choice money that will be able to pay for that. And it was clear that these were the better options for those courses. And then the world language texts cover all of our world language, the entire world language program, which is from seven to 12. And the old books, uh, more no longer remaining supported, um, for no longer being able to be used. Um, so we had to come up with something and they did their due diligence for that one as well. And came up with a good series of books to cover all of our world language programs.
Could I ask, could we move, um,
Yeah.
F, A, five and six to right below curriculum right now? Cause we've got a teacher here with a child that needs to get home. So could we do that?
Yes.
And one that needs to get home to her children, both of them, others also.
Totally.
Awesome.
Well played, so.
Text adoption, are we?
Rather, uh, we want to do the just the text adoption or the?
Yeah, we can, we can do all of it. We can do the whole kit and caboodle.
I believe this is why it's also preventing in the page or something, so.
Which is fine, but then you can go right after that. So instead of staying until the bitter end.
That is fine. Rather than me bumbling about what they know about better.
So I'm going to turn it over to you, Monica, right now. We're going to do text adoptions. And, and then the two courses, please.
So I don't have Mr. Vannell. Um, gave a lot of information. Um, Mrs. Sacco presented all three texts that they looked at. Um, Savus came out as the most comfortably priced. It is a combination textbook and six-year digital license. This is very similar to what we made a purchase of last year for US history. Um, and, um, Mr. Powell's worked with a couple of different companies. The problem with our world language text was that they discontinued and they're, um, leaving the K-12 space and only doing higher ed. And they are not supporting any of the materials that used to be durable material. So if you took language in high school, you remember like CDs, cassettes, whatever, that would have those authentic language opportunities. Those are all gone for the system that we currently use. Um, so we did get pricing for three major publishers and other, um, materials. So, um, for the courses, the EMR course, I know Ms. Goulet has been, we've been working for a couple of years now. Uh, she has furthered her certification so that she is able to, um, also teach the course and be our resident uh, instructor for that course. She is a certified EMSI. And she's been excited to bring that to our students. The textbook is the textbook for the course. There's no other textbook, but for our policy, we do have to have that in the textbook adoption process. And, um, Mrs. Tyron has worked to, um, secure an ECE course so that students would be able to earn credit for marketing. And this is something we'll talk about very briefly when we go over um, how a dual credit and dual enrollment courses are helping our students and helping our school system for that, for, um, recognition of providing opportunities for all of the students. So we have worked, we can have these courses, um, fully grant funded. They're both semester courses. We've reviewed the syllabus for marketing and the program for EMR and we're very excited to put these programs to Bolton Public School students.
Thank you.
And if you have any specific, like more specific questions about the ins and outs, you could ask either Mrs. Goulet or, uh, Mrs. Hino.
Any questions? I just want to say thank you both very much. It's amazing that we're going to be able to add these courses. So great job. Thank you. All right.
Um, so the first reads of the texts, uh, will be available.
At the board of ed.
At the board of ed for all of the interested parties to come and review. Finalize those next month and, um, then we want to approve the two courses specifically that's. So could we have a motion to approve the, ECE marketing class for, uh, next year?
So.
Second, uh, second. Thank you. Um, any questions or comments about this class? I'd just like to thank you for expanding our course offerings as always. And especially those that can offer students the opportunity to earn college credit while learning high school. I think that's very valuable. And we've done a great job of adding these classes in recent years. So I applaud that. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstaining. Okay, we have ECE marketing. Now, we please have a motion to approve the emergency medical responders class.
So.
You.
I'll say.
We have, anyone have any questions or comments about this class?
That's great idea.
Yes, I was very wholeheartedly supportive of this. I thank everyone. Regardless of what they're going to do in the future, should have an amount of first aid training. I really appreciate that you are able to do this and bring this to our students, especially those who will go forward and use this as a nice introduction and get them onto being EMT or a first responder or anything else. But it's great, even if they don't. So, um, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed or abstaining like that, that's okay. All right, we have emergency medical response also.
Thank you both very much.
Very good. That's curriculum. And now on to the finance committee.
Uh, yeah, so we weren't able to meet. So if it's okay, I'm going to go over it with everybody. All right, thanks. So we are thirty-one percent expended compared to last year at this time, which was twenty-seven percent. Uh, just again, just want to always remind the board about special education. Always changing. Um, in terms of the transfer listing for November, we have a reclassification to cover, um, the shortfall for signup genius subscription, uh, for Bolton High School appointment and event scheduling, transfer from salaries to cover the FCS replacement of the fifteen-year-old refrigerator that failed and we needed to hurry up and replace it. Transfer from salaries to purchase a tuba because we had some good interest in grades four through eight band programs. We're excited about that. And an emergency transfer from salaries to operations for the replacement of the two HVAC zone controllers at BCS in the elementary area that will be integrated into the new system, uh, that Ben talked about, uh, a little bit earlier. Um, and then, um, looking at the budget itself, um, we continue to report full expenditure in regular red. It's just way too early. Uh, the same for student support services. Um, as well as administration and support and operations and transportation, although you see the transfer listed there. We have actualized some savings in salaries, uh, and employee benefits, um, based on, um, shoring up the positions that we have not yet been able to fill. We're hanging on to the rest of the money in the hopes that we can fill uh, the positions and, um, personnel benefits as well. Um, this is both for the positions that continue to be unfilled as well as some new higher savings. Any questions for me about that?
What are the positions that are still undone?
So we have several pair of professional positions, um, left unfilled. Um, we do have some people that are going to be going out on leave, so we're going to have to potentially fill some of those with some extended, um, people with certification. So that will be some costly pieces there as well.
Something I was thinking your phone staff.
Yeah. Maybe we're a couple.
We were fully staffed with certified staffs.
Cert.
Certified staff. We have yet to be fully staffed. Um, but we're in better shape than we were last year at this time. So I'm going to take that as a positive. Okay, so we'll need a motion on the, um, transfers and then we'll go into cap up.
I'll make a motion to approve the November transfer. Um, so if anyone have any questions or comments or there about any of these? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, abstaining? Um, what do you think? Cap or the USA Mechanical Bitwa?
Yeah, we'll do that one first. So, um, I just want to share with you all that when USA Mechanical was installing, and this is a repeat again from what Ben reported on, but I need to do it for purposes of this motion. Uh, the new energy management system, they discovered that they were connecting wires to the old system that five actuators, which are now obsolete, needed to be replaced along with the valves. In addition, it was also discovered that there was a bad zone controller in the elementary area, which is still part of the old system. We need to replace the bad controller, but it was shared that it would make more sense to replace it along with the one right next to it and integrate them into the new system. Um, since our current contractor is still working on the first phase of the upgrade, coupled with the proprietary elements of the system, along with the emergency nature, I'm requesting to waive the bid to award USA Mechanical the contract to replace the five actuators and valves and the two controllers at BCS in the amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Awesome.
Um, anyone have any other questions or comments about this midway or? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? Cap up now.
Okay, so, um, on your sheet at the very top, you have, um, bond proposal, uh, pieces. I keep that there as a reminder of the bond projects that need to happen, uh, or at least need to start being discussed. Um, once the, um, the, the bond comes down, which I think is in two thousand seven, I believe that they shared that at the three board meeting. Right? Does that sound right? Um, so those are just there. And that includes the BCS roof replacement, the original air handlers, potentially air conditioning for classrooms. Um, the rooftop air conditioning units that are already there that, uh, provides AC to the, um, offices and the library, correct? Um, and then soccer field at the high school, science lab upgrade at center school and a library remodel at center school. Uh, for the FY twenty-six project requests, the second phase of the energy management system, district handicap van replacement, district utility truck with plow F-two-fifty replacement, the BCS bell system, um, the bells run off of Windows seven platform and that does not integrate properly at all. And a new system is needed. I have to be honest with you, John and I are having conversations about whether or not this is something that we can possibly manage this year. Um, or not. And maybe you transfer some monies from salaries or benefits to get it done because it's kind of a actually, it's not kind of a nightmare. It's really a nightmare at center school and we need to get it taken care of sooner rather than later. So I guess stay tuned on that. We may be able to eliminate that, um, from our list. Um, district security cameras. So the camera system, uh, that we have at both schools that was part of a safe school security grant that I wrote two thousand fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, fifteen, I don't know, somewhere in there. Um, the camera system is no longer approved by the federal government. Um, they made that change. It was approved when we got it because otherwise we would not have been able to get a state grant for it. Um, it is a, uh, system, um, owned by someone in China. That's why it's on the list. Um, and so we really need to look into, um, coming up with a new system. Um, and then the partial piece for the HVAC indoor air quality assessment that was decided last year, um, at finance, when we were talking about capital that we would put, um, we would break that into five pieces and spread it out over five years. So it's just not a big hit when the time comes. It may be a little bigger hit that last year because we really won't know the cost of it until we get there. Um, and then projected projects for FY twenty-seven include two districts, zero turn mowers, HVAC heat pump and rooftop units, phase one. Again, that's all contingent on the HVAC assessment for the high school. Uh, but we have it there just as a reminder that that's something that may need to be done. The BCS well and freezer generator, uh, again, something that may need to be done. And then the next part of the indoor air quality assessment. And then projects for twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty. This is just really our constantly running five-year, uh, project list and new projects pop up and, and they get added to the list as, as things happen. Questions for me about this?
Hearing no questions. Do we have a motion, please, to approve our capitalist or the finance committee to bring forward to town?
We'll make the motion.
We are. I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? Sorry. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. And if anyone opposed, abstaining?
On to Grace.
Yes.
The winter sports season has just begun. Our team, girls and boys basketball teams, boys swim co-op and hockey co-op have started practices with meets and games coming up soon. Everyone is looking forward to the successful season. This Tuesday, twelve-ten, the band choir had their winter concert. This was moved from Thursday, twelve-five because of the snow day. But the band choir adjusted to the change well and put on a great concert for the community with plenty of recognizable holiday tunes. If you miss the concert, you can always watch it along with many other events on the VHS YouTube app. Next week, during the week leading up to winter break, the June council has planned a spirit week. Candy cane day on Monday, wear red and white. Tropical holiday on Tuesday, wear tropical vacation gear. Winter Wonderland whiteout on Wednesday, holiday gear on Thursday and class colors on Friday. Additionally, we will be hosting a pep rally that Friday, twelve-twenty, as a kickoff to winter break, including multiple fun games for all four classes to participate in, including a students versus staff dodge, dodgeball game.
Thank you, Grace. I know you have things that you need to do. You're welcome to stay, but you can go. Thank you. Happy holidays. You too. Thank you.
Uh, community meeting reports, we also PTA.
So Thanksgiving, uh, we had, the PTA had a sponsored book fair. We had just about five thousand dollars raised, uh, for slots books. Um, and we have seven spots and books which we will, which works funds for books and libraries here in the library. Uh, on twelve-sixth, we had Senator Andy Robinson come in for the playground on the half day. Uh, he personally donated a five thousand dollar check to the playground fund. He is also working with the playground community for bonding, which, um, the bonding company through the state for funding. And also Simon and I have also donated a five thousand donation, dollar donation for the playground fund as well. Uh, the twenty, the twelve-twenty-seven coming up, we're having the Vice Palace date night, uh, which is thirty, seven-thirty. Um, on February seventh, K through five is going to have a special someone dance that we're planning and we're working on getting the whole pack of game tickets to back that the people would like to attend. Uh, just, yeah, I think maybe it's a um, uh, twelve-ten this week, we had the West Hartford Children's Museum come, the pre-K two, uh, through second grade, pre-K to favorite had a theme about animals and one, a grades one through two had stem with combustion and liquid nitrogen. So they were studying playing in the in the gym. It's quite enjoy that as well. Plus all those past week, we had our Penguin Pet Shop, which, you know, is always fun for the kids buying branded gifts for themselves and others. Uh, the spirit store is also open. The deadline for, um, stuff for, for the holidays is passed, but it's still open. It is run through a family through Bolton as well. So it's completely local, which is also really nice. And that's something. Oh, they also had the, um, Skydome comeback. There was some issues on it. Like it last month. Um, they had some technical difficulties. So they came back to get all the boxes that they missed. So it was a busy week. That's all I have.
Could you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Could you email me all that?
Absolutely.
I tried to write as fast as you were talking. There was so much there.
You want my notes?
Sure, I'll take them. Yes, that would be great. Thank you. I'm still without an admin assistant, so it's Beth and I. Thank you very much.
Just email me if you can't be my trigger.
Will do. No, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other community meetings to report on? All right, now I'll turn things over to superintendent for tonight's superintendent.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Giard for an update for BCS.
Be quick update. I'm going to repeat all this stuff. The BTA is doing a phenomenal job and the number one gift at the school store was the, you're the number one dad screwdriver. Pulled out day one. Uh, November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, BCS brought families into the building for parent teacher conferences. Very well attended and some grade levels, something we're talking about for next year, did not have enough slots for every parent to be able to attend. So we're talking about maybe shortening that, maybe adding a little more time in another evening. Uh, but that's a good problem to have because that means all the parents are heavily involved in attending conferences. So that's a, that's a great thing. We had another successful early release PD on December sixth with the staff receiving some timely PD with our newer reading programs. So the staff was very excited because not every PD that comes in is like exceptional. And, but they said the recent PDs that we've had have been very good. So that's great to hear from the staff. Um, lastly, BCS is very high energy as we approach the holiday season. We had a fun team building snackle team meeting on Tuesday. Uh, but the staff enjoyed many classrooms. We'll be doing gifts and crafts in their classrooms over the coming week. And then right before break, we leave on Friday, December twentieth, we have our annual holiday single or winter sing-along uh, that coming that Friday morning. So tomorrow is CCFC pajama day. So anybody listening tomorrow pajamas.
Any comments or questions for Daryl? Thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Principal Mocelli for an update from VHS.
And as my, as my team heads up to join me, I'll, I'll be real brief, just introduce them. So, uh, high school diplomas is a big thing. Um, you're, I think you're all aware that it's not just credits and seat time. There's lots of other requirements. Uh, one of them that we just want to give you a quick update on tonight is capstone. Um, and I, I, I won't give any information on that about how many years it's been around and who in the room may have done a capstone when we're here. Um, and that's, that's high stakes. And we also have an invitation for you as part of that presentation, uh, for Mrs. Clubford and Mrs. Goulet. And then, um, something the leadership team put in place a few years ago was a way to, uh, support students and help them organize and also really get ready for the kind of their, their future, uh, is a digital portfolio system, uh, where students are working on organizing the graduation requirements. And Mrs. Ty Boban is here to talk about that thing.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm Laura Goulet and my name is and we're the capstone advisors for the CR. So we wanted to give an update on how capstone is going and then invite you to our capstone night, which is in April. So, um, every year the seniors do a capstone project. Um, and we've been doing it since two thousand and six, which is in a graduation requirement. And what we really love about the project is that it's so individualized. So students meet with us, we confer, and they pick something that they're very passionate about. Something they want to learn a lot about. And then they spend the entire school year in addition. in addition to all of their typical coursework, learning and working with mentors, people in the community, people at home, teachers here. And then they have a project, something that they have learned about and can present out, um, by the end of the school year. Um, so we have had multiple check-ins with our seniors so far. The seniors this year are super excited and they're all have really cool projects picked out. So they present in April. Um, this year, so in the past, some of you may remember, some of you may have done. During the day, they would set up, they would do a trifle board and they would set up in the gym and everybody would go around and look at everybody's presentations. But then COVID hit and we got away from that. So we're bringing that back this year. And then at night, the seniors come back and then they present in the individual rooms. So that's what, and that happens in April. Yeah. So capstone night is April third from six to eight. We would like to invite to attend. It's here. The other end, the other. And in the past, we have some pictures around. That's right. Um, so in the past, just give you some ideas of some ideas of things that people have done. Um, but students have written and published books. We actually have some of the books here in the library. They have learned new skills, like learning a new language, uh, choreographic dances for the, uh, play, learning, uh, new how to play an instrument, designing and constructing costumes for uh, cosplay. Some of them are into acquiring new mechanical skills, restoring vehicles, cars, trucks, all that kind of thing. Working with animals, training animals. Engineering items. We had someone make a cuckoo clock for the crash last year. We've had somebody make a guitar from a block of wood a few years ago, creating robots. I mean, it's whatever their interest.
I have a beautiful table in my office that was a senior capstone project that has books on the bottom of it. A table, a light, and someone in this room's sister made it.
Awesome. I love it.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Titleman. Um, and as Joe said, I'm going to be working with students this year to create their digital portfolio. So it's really intended to be a housing location. It's, um, the template was created by our leadership team using Google Sites. So the finished product is a website. The, kind of the template is the picture on the slide. Um, and again, it was created by our leadership team to document students' progress towards their various graduation requirements. So that's the intent. Um, so each, for their first year at Bolton High School, each student will make a copy of the template. They'll save it to their Google Drive. And then they will work incrementally throughout each of their courses as they complete the various graduation requirements. They'll work to upload it to the different categories within their portfolio. Um, and they will do that during their connections time period. So on the blue ribbon, so that's kind of like the homepage of the digital portfolio, the blue ribbon off to the side has the different sections. Um, so students will document their student success plan, which they will complete with their school counselors. Their transferable skills progress, which is broken out by grade and each different transferable skill. And it gives students the opportunity to upload their assessment and reflect on if they are meeting or not meeting each of the transferable skills. And they can kind of work in that reflection where, what they need to do, modify, change, to make sure that they do meet each transferable skill by the time that they graduate. Um, then the net last two sections are their health and PE portfolio. And then finally is a space for them to upload their final capstone project that was just spoken about. So the goal is at the end of their senior year, each student will have a completed digital portfolio that they will then share out to their underclass peers during their connections period. That's the goal.
Any questions?
One quick question. How many hours does it take? What's the investment of time for some of these kids? I'm sure some putting less than, than others, but just curious.
It definitely depends, um, on their kid and on the project, but we encourage them to start in September. And then Mickey and I do monthly check-ins with them. So by December, hopefully they've already spent a couple of hours working on it. But of course, just like us, it tends to be, you know, March where they're putting in the most amount of time. Um, but for some of them, we've had students who are learning new languages and you take, you know, twenty plus hours to do something like that. So um, it's definitely a lot of, it's a lot of commitment, but luckily we know the students really well and we try to gear it towards. Um, if they have something that's really monumental and you don't know that they'll have the time without, and turn, and gear it down, it's something that is achievable for them. Any other questions?
Great job. Thank you all very much. Happy holidays. Thanks. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Monica, who is going to share our next generation accountability report. And, um, can Daryl or Amelie, do either one of you know how to do the lights? Or Joe, can you, somebody do the lights, please, so we can see this a little better. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good night.
Evening. I know we, um, have presented the next generation accountability report annually and we had spoken recently that our baseline year had been reset to twenty one, twenty two. Because the last appropriate set of data that we had was the eighteen nineteen school year. So we're gonna talk a little bit about that and the difference that we made.
Can you, can you just check, is that mic on?
Do you want me to be louder?
I think it went off. It's just so that it can be heard on the tape.
You'll hear me better on the, on the owl.
Okay.
I will raise, I didn't want to scream.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So we're gonna be well set. Um, I know we have some new board members. So that I can share with you, the next generation accountability report is available on EdSite Public. This is something that is available to the public. And it's a broad set of twelve indicators that sort of give a well-rounded picture of how our students are doing. That is to say, it's not just academic performance. It looks at a number of other things. It is an attempt at providing a holistic snapshot of a school district. Um, Connecticut again did not have any summative ratings during nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one for advanced reasons. And, uh, so we were using eighteen nineteen, we had to reset in twenty one, twenty two. So that's part of what we're gonna be looking at quickly. Um, this is what it's really designed for. We track our progress. We use this data in addition to everything else that we collect. In addition to all of our student data, in addition to surveys, we look at how we're trending on the accountability report. It helps us make improvements. It is one data point that we use when we're doing, um, strategic planning. It recognizes successes and it promotes transparency to the general public. Again, this is a public reform. So for districts and schools, it gives us a lot more information. It expands ownership of accountability. It keeps us from just focusing on math and ELA. So we'll take a look at a couple of the key, um, pieces that are on here, including arts access and graduation readiness. Um, it encourages leaders to view accountability results as a tool to guide and track this. There is the, the state has actually done an excellent job creating a live dashboard where we can look at, you know, years of information uh, and trends that we've seen. We're gonna go, we're not gonna go through it piece by piece, but this one, oh jeez. So of course there is academic achievement and academic growth, obviously. But it does look at chronic absenteeism. If you recall from last year, that was something we were really focusing on. Whether or not students are ready, um, for life after graduation, physical fitness and arts access. So the index scores, they give us a total number of possible points. Sometimes it's a hundred, sometimes it's seventy five. Our score is based on our progress towards those. So I'm not expecting anyone to understand this, but to, I mean, to see it. But if you look at that bottom number right here, this is our overall index. And we have made steady progress. And here we are this year at seventy nine point one, which brings us to our pre-pandemic levels. Which is a good thing. We also made vast improvements last year, um, by just focusing with chronic absenteeism and messaging to families and students that every student, every day is an important thing. Um, we continue with our academic performance, obviously, and, um, making sure students are ready for, again, life after graduation. Are they headed to a two or a four-year institution? That is something that has gone up. Our arts access, which includes visual and performing arts, in addition to media arts. So a couple of years ago, we approved a, um, like a graphic design course that Mr. Gallin was teaching, that falls into that cluster for arts access. You might see some blank spots. That is just because our numbers are so small. They do not report out on those because you would be able to identify specific students. So we have a very small number of English learners, multilingual learners, that's where a gap is. And a very small number of high need students who have a six-year graduation. That's to explain those blanks. So our strategic priorities and focus areas, based on this and continuing from last year, based on our progress, we have gone up in every area. Is to continue our commitment to PD and mathematics. Um, this is something that we are always looking for. It has been a challenge to find. I know that we encourage our teachers to go to local conferences, but we want to provide, um, even more based on what they need. Continued implementation. This is our first full year, uh, as Principal Giard said, with our reading program and teachers have been receiving professional development throughout. We are utilizing a new comprehension assessment for ELA in grade seven through eleven to target instruction by standard. That's new. It's something that they're trying to see if it gives them good data. Um, continuing feature priority, these are points that you've seen before, working with families and students on regular daily attendance. Um, last year, we started with creating the systems for MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support. And it came up extensively in end of year reports last year. Um, and just continue to assess and refine that for the policy where we are. Um, and continue to ensure that our students are learning in a safe and supportive environment. And our highlights this year, um, include improvement across all areas, including high need students. Everyone, every single indicator has made some degree of progress. Increased preparation for post-secondary education, which means more students taking AP ECE courses, like the one you just approved. Um, and CTE courses. Um, increase in entrance into post-secondary programs. We have more students entering, uh, two and four-year institutions. And I know Mr. Muselli said this last year, but I mean, last year, last meeting. Um, but Bolton High School was named the Connecticut School of Distinction for High Performance this year for twenty twenty four with the fifth highest high school index.
Monica, I
Significant achievement.
It's huge.
And it is, I mean, just kudos to Principal Muselli and his team and his teachers and his academic leaders.
I will just say that also that the four high schools that ranked above Bolton High School are nowhere near here.
Yes.
Correct.
That is
Right? Just nowhere near here. So phenomenal job.
And honestly, yeah.
Mr. Muselli, the leaders, the staff, phenomenal job at Bolton Center School, Mr. Giard, BCS, sorry. Uh, amazing job. Just great work. Everybody's been digging in and working very hard on behalf of our students and they are to be congratulated for their efforts.
Absolutely. Wonderful.
Would it be possible to get a copy of the statistical part from that? I just, it was hard to see, but I just want to
You will link to their reports and then you could just, you could just look around.
It's a public site.
But you know what? But she will, what, what we'll do is we'll make a PDF of those two pages and send them to you. So you can see, look at it yourself, side by side, along with the link. So see what we're working on. Um, it is, yeah, it will be linked in the minutes too, as soon as the minutes are, um, live, which hopefully will be tomorrow.
Really like to see what the strengths are that's a part of the schools nearby.
Yeah, so you can do that, looking at the EdSite itself.
You, you can really, you can really dig deep if that's your thing.
How is like the assessment done? Is it the older classes? Is it based on like enrollment in the class or like testing scores?
Our assessment data?
Yeah. So you mean like for arts access or something like that? Yeah. Number of students taking the course.
Yes, right. And then for like elementary, it's based on like testing score.
Yeah, based on Sback data. It's based on the physical fitness tests, which, um, we continue to implore them to change because it's not a measure of
I was wondering how physical.
I'll, I'll just offer, it's really not, it's not a phenomenal measure of just about anything. We're also, um, I chair, co-chair the CAPS Assessment and Account, which is Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents uh, Assessment and Accountability Committee, uh, along with Kathy Krieger in Farmington. And we partner with Ajit Kapal Krishnan, who is the, uh, assessment guru for the State Department of Education. Um, and we have been talking a lot in our meetings that we need to add another indicator at the high school level for those students who are entering the workforce or going into the military. Uh, because it's not just going to college, right? And, and, and it's almost like high schools get dinged, but they do, they get dinged for kids who choose something else, right? Um, so different things are based on different criteria. Great question.
And, and not every, um, trade school has a two-year program that would be recognized in a two and four-year.
Correct.
So it's all part of that, not judgmental.
Right. Except that it is kind of, right? Because they don't have other things besides two or four year. Right? Like to me, I mean, yes, that's data, but it's also judgmental that what kids are choosing to do.
No, I mean in general.
In general, yes. But we're working with the state to try to improve it.
Now, we just needed to improve some of the, uh, physical fitness.
We really need them to do that.
It's the same test you probably took when you were
It is the same test that you took when you were in school. Sit and reach, yes. Yeah, I'm just Yeah.
Um, what was the, what was the target column? What was the purpose of that? Was that our target or was
No, that's the state target. So they give us, uh,
Was there, uh, was there a, is there a summation of the target? Like we have a summation for our seventy nine point one?
Yeah, they give us how many points we've earned. So the target is that, I mean, there's more calculation there, but it's not always a hundred percent. So they want us to get as close to a hundred as possible.
Okay.
Um, so for, um, the performance index, the target is at seventy five because a hundred is like, that really
Okay, so we're exceeding.
Yeah.
Thank you. Nice job. And again, kudos to all our staff and to the high school for their recognition. Outstanding.
That concludes my report tonight.
All right. Thank you. We have a number of unfinished businesses to deal with. The first one, is a formality to uh, replace Diana Pagano on the search committee with Ashley Visoli. We have a motion to replace Diana with Ashley on search night. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Board of Education committees, we have number of vacancies. Some new members who have some shuffling around. And this is possible action. I don't know. People have gotten a chance to think about where they fall in this list of subcommittees and think about our futures in them. Need another person on curriculum, like personal policy, transportation, sort of needs another person. Correct. We don't have a person attending now. Do we, does the new members have thoughts about this? Do we wanna table this until next month and take the holidays to think about where we're gonna see ourselves?
I, I can turn, uh, curriculum. I would like to be on the call. I can train curriculum. I would have liked to be on the call the other day.
Oh, I know. Yes, it was.
Away.
Talked about it.
What is transportation?
We don't really meet very often.
Yeah, so if, if, when we negotiate a transportation contract again. I will share that information with the transportation committee and then a recommendation will be made to the board. And if there is a. Situation where someone is requesting like a bus stop change and it's denied or whatever, I may have to bring that to the transportation committee.
It has. I think we've met one time in five years, so.
Yeah, correct.
I can do that.
Ask us, well, we got two years left on our bus contract or something like that.
Yes. We need someone on policy with Chris. So let me just explain.
Talk to Chris about it, but that was my thought.
Okay, and let me explain what it entails. So we contract with shipment and good when the board's attorney. To provide policy updates. And you saw a number of the policies, right, that came forward. So we have switched over all of our policies from almost all of them. The old cave policies to the shipment and goodwood policies, because Chris and I. And Sue were spending an endless amount of time. Pretty much rewriting it. So we, we needed a better system than that. So now they send the updates. I'm able to go in with the cross outs and whatever, and then I push them out. To the policy committee with a memo explaining, you know, one, two, two, zero. Here, here's, here's why these changes were made. They were made because statutory requirements changed or whatnot. There's another grouping that I have to send out of some policies still from, that came out in October. So I'll be sending those forward. And usually you guys just read through them. Lots of times it's just statutory requirements, right? Or, or, or they've made some changes, or we take out pronouns and we're being pronoun neutral now, whatever the case may be. So. It's pretty straightforward. It's just sometimes there's a fair amount of reading.
It's often spent all summer, right?
And it often happens summertime, like as soon as.
There'll be a bunch.
The legislature, right, passes. So there'll partly be one more grouping that I'm gonna be sending out to you guys probably in January. And there were times that I've put them up for a first read and sometimes you guys are still getting through them because there's still the time to make changes for a second read. Okay.
If you, if you just wanna put me down with Chris on it, and he's okay, I was gonna talk to him.
Yeah, no, this is set in stone. I mean, obviously.
Oh, he'll be happy to have a partner.
I figured, yeah. How demanding is the crack?
It's once a month on a Wednesday for like two or three hours in the middle of the day.
Yeah, where is that actually?
That's right.
It's.
Two hours?
Correct Central, that happens at in Hartford.
Chris had done that past.
Sue and Ria shared it, right?
Sort of.
They have, yeah, they have a Zoom meeting.
They, I'll have a virtual now. Yeah.
I actually have it off on Wednesdays, and I was like, maybe I didn't realize I need a Wednesday. I could try to attend these meetings and see how it goes. Curious about what all they got going on over there.
Like a rotation, you know, here.
Yeah.
Do we have one person?
Who do we, how do we?
We go up here.
Yes, we've.
I, I mean, a lot of.
Ria, agenda topics, any thoughts on what those, do you remember any agenda topics?
Oh, I really didn't go to that many meetings, but they were talking about the, the need to. Put major capital improvements into their facilities.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
They were talking about that.
What I'm saying.
This time, this school has been around for long enough that they needed to have a lot of renovations. And, you know, whether they were gonna get some money.
Schools that don't serve many people, yeah, it's real big. Maybe they're, yeah, they'll be happy to have me. I'm gonna show.
Oh, I might sell tickets.
Yeah, I'll try, I'll try to do that.
I'll see what information I can find.
Yeah. I don't know how I get in touch with whoever.
Christmas.
That's next week.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to the director.
Next month, say it.
I don't know. I'll reach out to the director. I'll find some information. All right, that's great. I'll send everybody an updated list.
Usually set in stone and. Next fall, we have an election, four seats up, and we may have. Different people on the board, who knows? So we'll be re-revealing all of these again in the fall. Of next year or December, I should say, about a year from now. So.
Great.
Do we need to take action on anything?
No, you know.
Okay. The strategic plan, would you like to?
Sure. So I'd like to suggest to the board that you consider adding an additional year to the strategic plan and end it in twenty twenty six instead of twenty twenty five. I think this will give the new superintendent some time to get to know the district. To work collaboratively with the constituents on a new plan for twenty twenty six and beyond later next school year. I think it, it has been shared with me, administrators and teachers would find this extension very settling and helpful as it will continue to provide a systems approach. As the new superintendent settles into the district. Further, teachers and administrator goals are tied to the strategic plan, and this would allow for a smooth start. And focus goals for next year while the new plan is developed.
Yes, this was, I think, mentioned to some of us in the recent past. And I think that's a sensible.
Any outside of changing it? There's not like any.
No, I mean.
Or any like.
No.
Accreditation that were.
No, no issues whatsoever. I mean, you could make a six-year strategic plan. It can be a ten-year plan, a five-year plan. You know, we had originally done the five-year plan and. If I'd known I was retiring this year, I might have suggested at the time you do a six-year plan, but I didn't know that then. So I just think it helps for the transition for everybody.
Makes sense.
I think it makes sense. We did talk at the three board meeting about how important the next strategic plan is from a long-term planning standpoint. So. But I think that timing makes sense. It's just. It is important for setting the stage for some of the things we were talking about at the pre-grad.
So would that put it through the end of the school year next year?
Yes.
But not twenty six, twenty seven school year?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah. And you could extend it again if that, you know what I mean? If you. And, and you may have to, to be honest with you, right? Because it, it, it's very time-consuming process, right? And for those of you that were on the board, the last time we did this. Probably beginning to end, it took nine months. Beginning to end final product board approving it, so.
Sure. And I wanna do it right to the next one. So I think that makes sense too.
You know what I mean? So at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, give yourself some leeway and then you can have further discussion next fall with the new superintendent about. Maybe it makes sense to push it out one more year to give them time to get their feet on the ground and. Get a lay of the land and then go from there.
So I'll make a motion to extend the strategic plan to the end of the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Let's see. Any other questions or comments on the strategic plan? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed or abstaining. All right, soon I do this without coughing. Have a motion, please, to approve the following policies.
Let me do it.
One, two, two, O, nondiscrimination, three, one, six, O, budget procedures and line item transfers, four, one, one, one dot three, increasing educator diversity plan. Four, one, one, two, dot five, personnel employment and student teacher checks. Four, one, five, two, dot six, family and medical leave. Five, one, one, two, admission to public schools at or before age five. Five, one, one, three, attendance, truancy and chronic absenteeism. Five, one, one, eight, point one, homeless children and youth. Five, one, four, one, dot two, one, administration of medications. Five, one, four, one, dot nine. Improve completion rates of F A F S A and six, one, four, six, graduation requirements.
So. That's the motion. So.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you can be the first.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about any of these? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed or abstaining. All righty, new business we have already covered in its entirety. It is the. Foreign language texts and the oral history text that may emergency responder text. We will be going on next month, the two courses that we already added. Do you have any future business? So now we're looking for a motion to go into executive session. For the purpose of discussing the superintendent's mid-year review goals and also to invite the superintendent. Hello. And second. You, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, saying, thank you everyone.
How much evening?
Night all. Happy holidays.